Evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the City of New Franklin on Wednesday, March 6th. Tonight, before our regular meeting starts, we have our committee meetings. These are less formal. It's where we discuss the legislation that's going to happen tonight. The public is welcome to be involved in this, but it's up to the chair of the committee or the, yeah, that's talking at the time. We ask you to keep your comments brief. And then after the committee meetings, that's where we'll start the regular meeting. So tonight, we have seven first readings, no seconds or thirds. And the first reading is the Public Utilities Committee, Mr. Powell, first couple, actually.
I'd like to open the Public Utilities Committee meeting at 6:04. And this is Resolution 24R16. It's a resolution imposing a moratorium on the issuance or granting of application for permits for public storage, nude storage, or self-storage facilities in the City of New Franklin. This is a, basically a renewal of a resolution we passed over the last few years that, basically, as it says, puts a moratorium on new ones being installed. Any comments on this?
We first passed this on April 6th of 2022, and it was for a one-year moratorium. And I don't see if we did that in 2023. In 2022, we were expected to have this, if it was only taken care of, or whatever concerns taken care of within that year. Now we're asking to do that again. What guarantees do we have that this is going to happen within a year? Or are we going to just keep kicking it down the road?
Well, I, the mayor and I had a meeting, and I discussed, we've got three pieces here that we talked about last week, I think it was. And since then, I found out that someone has actually taken this gap. I didn't realize, we weren't certain whether it had expired or not when we were talking. It did expire. Not only did it expire, but then somebody applied and was granted, granted from it, or it's just a renewed, is it? Which one are you talking about? At Center and Rediger and...
Yeah, no, that didn't happen. That happened previously. That went through, that was a conditional. It went through planning and zoning and through council. But as of now, it wasn't, they didn't proceed on those within the allotted time. There was another application, planning and zoning returned some recommendations and conditions to them, and they have not refiled anything. So right now, there's nothing pending as far as that particular enterprise is concerned.
Okay.
I don't know that we've had any in the interim. I'm not sure, I don't recall we had any more moratorium.
I think definitely before we vote on this, well, first, I'm going to recommend that we have time on all three of these. These are, as I emailed everybody on council, and said these topics came up for discussion more than anything else. But I think we need to verify, because I was given other information. I was told that there was a renewal of the application. I'm not quite sure what it was. But as far as kicking the can down the road, back to Mr. Cott's question, yeah, the goal here is to have our zoning done, and I don't know what the overall timeline is on that whole project. Do you think another year is? I think there's a good chance we're going to be into next year before we're entirely finished. And the zoning administration supports this. I think in a large way, what this has to do with is, it's not to say that we shouldn't have it all, it's just a question of where they ought to be. And we're in a situation now where it appears we're having discussions and a good possibility of infrastructure on two of our few commercial corridors, 619 and 93. It's not just New Franklin has a bias towards this. Municipalities as a whole have a bias against these types of facilities in an area that would be more productive for the city and a better use for the city. So that hasn't been entirely explored. And so I think it makes sense, kind of now more than ever, quite frankly, to get a moratorium on these while we consider, because we haven't gone through zoning districts, and we haven't gone through what's allowable where. And that's the discussion, I think, that's going to drive these things. And it may well be that we determine, we have enough of them on 93, we don't need any more of them here. If you want to open one, it's a big city, but not on this corridor or not on that corridor, for instance. So that, more than anything else, that's what this is about.
Anything would be better to do it now while we can, get a handle on it, as opposed to waiting or looking down the line.
Right, or for an application to come in.
Mm-hmm. You would not be able to do it.
I reached out to Barry to ask him a few questions, and over the past few years, he said we had five or six inquiries, four locations to build these. He also asked about some of the challenges, and the challenges don't really appear to be when it's locally owned, it's when these facilities are purchased from an out-of-state agent, and then they don't maintain the grass, and they don't maintain the upkeep of the location.
That makes sense.
There's also, one more quick point. There's also, as I've learned, a couple of different styles of these. So somebody pointed out the one over on, by Home Depot, they're more of micro-business units.
We're recalling luxury storage units.
Luxury storage units, where there's, they're large enough that somebody could operate a small handyman shop, plumbing and supplying, put their nuts.
Have an office in front.
Yeah, they have a office.
Yeah, office spaces.
Right. So I think that's another case for the moratorium would be that maybe we need to define these a little bit better. It's not just where they are, but what they are. And we don't have any...
We don't have anything right now.
Oh, no, it's fine. I think, as the mayor mentioned, that had them within the corridors, business corridors of 619 or 93, but we have other areas that they could be. And again, it's not that we're necessarily against self-storage units, it's just the location, because that's a big piece of property that might have one employee, as opposed to having, whether they're the luxury storage units, where there would be numerous employees working out of that location from those different things, or any other type of business that would have many employees versus one to none. So, you know, all those things are in consideration, so we have to think about it.
I think it's also pertinent to know you could repeal it at any time.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
That's a valid point, yeah. So if something came in and something came up, it looked like a good idea, council could repeal the moratorium. That's an interesting thought.
That's very interesting.
So what's the thoughts you guys want to receive, or you guys want to ask the council?
I open either way. If someone wants to wait, I would say time, take time. If they want to vote tonight, I would do the same also. I would go in the way I can.
I would say with Mr. Cott's, with like, we have a little bit, you know, 619, our business corridor, we have a little bit of land along to us. That they, you know, having one employee for like a little bit of land, we can find something that'll be more fruitful for the space we do have in Franklin. And then I've heard a little bit about those like little micro offices or whatever, like little business stores. Like, that would be okay, but the definition of defining that would have to be through the zoning, so I'll have to work more time on making sure that we get this correct.
Well, time meaning you want the moratorium or time on the legislation?
Well, time, we're getting the zoning done.
Yeah.
We're getting the zoning done in that part.
So you mentioned the idea of the moratorium.
So my question would be, is it one year long enough? Or do we need to, you know, readdress this in a year? Or, you know, as we're working on our zoning and getting all that in line, would it make more sense to do 18 months or two years? And with the, with the thought that we could repeal it at any time?
I mean, you could certainly extend it for a second year. We just didn't the first time around, and I don't know if it was ignorance or apathy, as they say. I don't know if we just let it last, we hadn't had any applications, there was no discussion. You know, we weren't quite as close on sewer and water as we are now, so it just didn't come up, quite frankly. And I'll take responsibility for not bringing it to your attention. But we could do the same thing a year from now if it turned out that, you know, we needed more time on it.
What were your thoughts, and you guys want to proceed with this?
Yes, I think so.
And you guys want to wave them through?
Penny, do you mind if I ask if anybody in the public is here to talk about storage units? Just to make sure there wasn't some, somebody that had something really important to add.
All right, well, that would round out the...
You got a couple. You're the man here, right?
So the next one we have is a Resolution 24R18. This is a resolution to establish a temporary moratorium on the establishment of small-box discount stores and the issuance of zoning permits and any other permits for the building structure or use, change of use relating to the establishment.
Early on, what are we on?
I'm on 18.
We're on 18.
Skip 17.
It was very... Okay, so Jack, you want to speak a little about this one, since you brought it?
Yep, same concept, maybe a little bit different. The concept of the fruitfulness of a piece of property that we have, since we have a limited number of developable lots. And I'm going to share some anecdotal evidence from where I grew up in Mahoning County, very small town, much smaller than this. We have, out in Lake Milton, we have about a 25-mile, 20 to 25-mile drive to the nearest grocery store of any significance to a nice giant eagle or something like that. And there's enough people there to justify a little grocery store. We had a little grocery store, we got a Dollar General, then we got a Family Dollar, then Dollar General built another Dollar General, and moved out of one Dollar General, so now we have a vacant Dollar General. There is zero hope that that community will ever have any type of real grocery store now that those two are there. It's impossible, and I would hate to see that happen here, because we're on that balance too, you know? Everything is within five miles, about five to seven miles, we can get anything. But we sit in the middle. There's been talk, I will tell you, since I've been on council, since I've lived out here, one of the number-one things you hear people say, "We need a grocery store, we need a grocery store, we need a grocery store." I remember, this name came up the other day, I remember Margaret McKee, many years ago, in the mid-'90s, stumped her fist, saying, "I want to be able to buy a pair of socks and a head of lettuce in New Franklin," and I think. And anybody who remembers her, that's, she wasn't gentle, gentle with her words. So I think, and especially with the concept that we could, we could, should, would we get an application, the fact that we could repeal this, I was a little nervous about having emergency language, going too fast on this stuff, but with that fact, that's all I, anybody else?
I looked into a little bit larger-type stores, Aldi's, Save-A-Lot, stuff like that, just to find out what their property requirements are. I went to Aldi's corporate site, and they're requiring two and a half acres with 103-foot frontage. They prefer a signalized intersection or a signal, whether, if it's on a linear run of road. They want to be within a Kent's trade area, and they want to be located in a community or regional shopping district. And then they want, you know, they didn't have an exact number of population, but they mentioned they want a higher population, they want a traffic rate of 20,000 cars per day passing their store. So I wonder if we have anything that would fit that template out here, because I think our busy, busy road is 619, I don't think it's...
What is it, 15,000?
That's around 12 on 619.
Well, that's a few years ago.
If this is basic criteria for a store of that type, what kind, what type of store would we get out here? I would assume there's, it's kind of like the industry standard.
Yeah, if I could, I don't know that it's so much that Aldi would come next year. But the concern is if small-box, I didn't want to name one, a small-box discount or two come within the next year or two, we will not see an Aldi or anybody else. You know, there's anticipation, there's 100 acres of land, developable land, open land on this stretch of 93, from Vanderhoof to Grace Church. And when the sewer and water comes, that's what we have to be concerned about. And that's when it would be more likely that perhaps we would see more small boxes, et cetera. I recall that when the first one went in, it wasn't long after that that a property owner pretty close to the administration building was approached for a second one. And as we know, oftentimes you see them that close. And I'm not trying to paint them as evil, but they're contrary, perhaps, to what we'd like to see out here. And so I think that it may be a slow growth, it may be a mutual growth, there may be a time that, you know, that you have some attached single family in this area, people who want to take advantage of the state park and the Ohioan Dairy Canalway Trail, and you're able to say to a developer, "Listen, here's what's, you know, here's what's coming residential, now are you interested from a commercial standpoint?" So I think the time will come. But I think the bigger concern is shutting the door now to give us time to let this stuff evolve. That's my thought on that.
To add one little thing, it's not only contrary to what I think we want, I really believe it's contrary to what the public wants. I think our citizens would rather not see more.
When I say "we," I meant the collective "we," and that's the benefit of having gone through the comprehensive plan and getting that sense of what people want to see out there.
So I reached out to Barry on this as well, to get his thoughts on it. And one of the concerns he expressed with the local location we have is lack of staffing, so then the place isn't really being optimized to its full capacity. Property maintenance, that seems to be an issue that he's had with him, sort of keeping the yard mowed and building up and so on. So it seems like there could be some hurdles with another store like that being dropped into the area as well.
I see it differently. So why do they have to? They've got the market on milk or grocery and that. I think competition brings in, like, you know, if you're the existing box, like, hey, we got to step up our game, because we're going to shut our doors, we don't have the sales. I just don't see Aldi going, "Oh, my gosh, we're not coming because that little box store is there." I mean, they, they will be scared of, I think they're a mammoth, I would love to have them. It's a great retailer, but, you know, you're just basically, right now, blessing the current operator doing what he's at, because he, you know, I'm sort of a capitalist kind of thing, and I'd love to see competition, so then that, maybe the existing one would be raised up like your game, or go out of business in something, it's a nice lot there in the corner. I'm sure something could be used for that. So sort of, but I don't know about the tax revenue, is it good for?
I just don't see really getting employee income tax.
Yeah, okay. That seems to be very limited. So I can see that. I just hate limiting, you know? So I know we don't want to be the town of, you know, I think there's a happy medium there, as long as we would be able to, you know, does that mean they go, we're not accepting, and they turn away and go to a...
Does this give us the ability to have this in place, and then if somebody still approaches us, we can look at that proposal and maybe repeal it at that point?
Yes. It would essentially, I think, I think to answer your question, it would shift the onerous from planning and zoning to council. And essentially, this legislation would give council the first word before anything proceeded.
And the notion that we've expressed there is, I mean, it's not, it's not personal opinion, I'm no expert in these, but there was a really nice article, we're not alone in this, as you know, you probably saw that article down in Camden, and some of the headaches they had, and then the industry experts who weigh in on this and say the kind of things that we're saying here, that, you know, it's sort of shuts the door on the bigger stores coming. This is something I've heard from our economic development people as well.
Okay. Yeah, another interesting thought that I think I read in that, if I didn't read it in that article from the Camden repository, it was somewhere else, the concept of communities requiring them to sell fresh produce, to say, "Okay, if you want to build a box store, here's what you have to do," you know, "because we don't want to be a food desert for healthy food." I don't know if that's, I don't even know if that's possible.
No, that's good. And it really is, I mean, this really isn't, let's throw something up here and keep them out. I mean, we don't have, we need work on that zoning code, and particularly the matrix, and we don't have good definitions. We're going to get to one in a minute here, you're going to be talking about the canvas one. And our zoning code talks about where it's permitted use for a drugstore, okay? Well, the question is, is that a drugstore or is it not a drugstore? If it's medicinal, is it a drugstore? If it's recreational, is it not? You know, it's going to require some fine tuning. And I think this type, and the previous one that you mentioned, you know, it's going to require some fine tuning, because there is a difference between a flat-out storage unit and the storage, I've heard them called storage condos, or whatever you call them, which could be a good thing. And we need to differentiate that, I believe, but that's going to have to be done through the process of the zoning code revision. So we really, we're at a, you know, we really, really are at sort of an apex time, a crossroads here, a good time, because, you know, we're getting that done while we're waiting for the infrastructure, and it's, I do believe it's a good, a good time to take a pause.
Another thing to keep in mind, I think, is as we're looking at possible developing 619 in that corridor, and talking about how we want that to look, what type of feeling do we want to give people when they're coming in? If we don't have this moratorium in place, it gives an opportunity possibly for that type of business to grab a piece of that land right in the middle of where we want, and, you know, we work around them instead of them working around us. So it wouldn't necessarily prohibit them from being within that development, but we would control how they look and how they operate to a degree.
And if I could echo what you just said a minute ago, Jack, and I know Jim, Mr. Cott needs this as well, Mr. Daniels, that it's a collective "we" that we're talking about here. You know, we are in the process, we're at the hopeful stage that we'll be awarded a planning grant for 619. And the intention is to put together a project team of stakeholders and citizens, and anything that's suggested over there, you know, sort of the overlay is the comprehensive plan. So it's a collective "we" when we're talking about those kind of things.
And Jack, I think it's wonderful you brought these up, because it's good discussion, so really the public can start thinking about this also.
Exactly.
I think it's fair to just mention, I don't think this is saying we're anti-business, I think it's just...
No, just the opposite.
Who are probably smart and thoughtful about how the businesses go in.
Does everybody think about time on this one? Do you feel the same, or do you want to allow more time? Is there anybody?
I'm ready to go with it.
I'm ready to go also.
It's just allowing New Franklin to grow responsibly, looking forward.
Yeah.
Anybody from the public have a comment on box stores more?
All right, the next one is R, I'm sorry, 24R17. This is a resolution establishing a temporary moratorium on the establishment of adult-use cannabis operators and the issuance of zoning permits or any other permits for the building structure use or change of use that would enable the cultivation, processing, or retail sale of recreational marijuana and be put in emergency. So I looked into this one a little bit, and since we had this on the ballot in November of '23, I was just curious as to how New Franklin voted on this. And in looking at the polling records from the Board of Elections, this passed in New Franklin 54% to 46%. I looked at Green as well, they were 51%, 49%, 51% yes. Springfield was 54% yes and 46% no, it was the same as we were. I also looked at the Ohio Revised Code, I'm sorry, the Ohio Administrative Code, 3796, which deals solely with the use cultivation, all the uses of cannabis, and this is really dealing with the medical end of it. But I also read some other articles where they reflected that the recreation would probably be as strict or stricter than the medical usage. One of the concerns I had heard was, you know, not being located near a school, church, or anything. And per 3796.30, they shall not be located within 500 feet of school, church, library, playground, park, or any such type of operation there. Also, as far as getting a license, they're thinking that in order to get a recreational license, you already, the people first serve with people with existing medical marijuana, marijuana licenses. And then for non-medical license holders, they're going to be put into a lottery program, and then they'll have to go through all the, all the checks and balances to get their license.
The current medicinal will be lottery-winning.
The current medicinal will get first crack at it. And then, once, you know, that's all going to be based off of population, so they're not going to allow too many in the smaller areas, it's just going to be population-driven. And then you can't have a facility pop up within a mile of another facility. So there is a whole bunch of rules and theory you could go through as to where you can and can't work these locations. Comments, thoughts?
Just going to have appropriate medical as well, because you see on there, reach out, sell recreational, are you going to do for medical as well?
I had, once again, I reached out to Barry, and he said that we had one, since this has been in place, not the moratorium, but since medical marijuana has been in place, we'd had one person reach out, and it was more of a fat-finding, just to see what our regulations were. I don't know that this, I mean, this clearly isn't going to affect the, how this is for recreation.
Yeah. Well, and I'm...
I just wonder if we should add medical in there.
I'm gonna, I, let me, let me say a couple of things here. Again, I brought this up because I wanted to have a discussion, I want to have a discussion in open, I wanted to invite the public to see it. I thought, I figured we might be fooled tonight, but apparently not. Maybe in a couple weeks. I found out a couple of things, again, after the mayor and I talked, I learned a couple of new things. And one was that Green had done one, and what they said was that the moratorium, and I have a copy of it here, that you know, I reached out to CJ Meager, the president of Green City Council, to see what, exactly how they did it. And the concern with what the administrative policy is at the state level is that the Senate, the Ohio Senate and the governor have proposed one change to the law that was passed by the voters. Not a massive change, but a change, a refinement, and some clear, refinement and clarification to some definitions. Then the House said, "Well, we're just going to let the administrative role take place. However, that could change." And that's one of my fears, is that we could end up, if we don't do some type of a moratorium, we could end up with something that we don't know how it's going to be regulated at the state level yet. So it could be, there's, could be some confusion there, but then at the same time, there could be some real advantage to us having these, because we, as a local municipality, get a 3%, as is defined today, 3% of the revenue, I believe, stays in local, that's a significant amount of money. So, yeah, it's a tax.
10% tax.
Yeah, 3% comes here. So I, just like the other ones, I'm not necessarily pro or against, but I just think that we need time, and that's what I'm looking for. I thought it was interesting the way they worded it, because I still can't quite, I just got this from CJ 20 minutes before I got here. But he said that the way theirs was worded was that it's for 12 months unless there's adoption of clearer definition by the state.
That makes sense.
I, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I am not in favor of this. I don't understand the need for it when there are so many hoops or roadblocks that the state has already, you know, put in place before anything happened. Northern Barberton and Green already have moratoriums in place. As you mentioned with the 3%, you know, I don't want to be the pothead community of Northeast Ohio, but, you know, it's a business, it's going to be a business throughout the state, and I think that we should keep our doors open for, you know, people when they start looking at where they can, where they can open a place, they're going to look at Green, "Oh, there's a moratorium, there's a parking moratorium, door, moratorium, New Franklin." Woo-hoo, they love us! And, you know, I think it's, the research I've done on it, there has not been like... there has not been like, uh, an abundance of crime, uh, from, from these things. It's not, it's not people hanging out on, on the sidewalk, uh, as soon as they go in and, you know, make their purchase, they're, you know, they're going home or wherever. Uh, yeah, personally, this isn't for me. I, I, I won't be a customer. Uh, I, you know, it's, it's just, it's just not my bag. Uh, but, but I don't see why we need to, I don't know, be scared of it. Uh, I think, I think is, if we get a couple, and, you know, like you mentioned, there's, there's going to be regulations of how far apart they can be and, you know, different things like that. So if we get one or two of these businesses, I'm not, I'm not afraid of it. And I am not, I will not vote for this moratorium.
So based on what I found, I, I don't want to be anti-business. And I, you know, the voters clearly said that they, they supported it out here. So those are the first two things I was looking at. After looking at the regulations and stuff, I think they're stringent enough to where it's not just going to be popped in the middle of a neighborhood. Uh, at the bare minimum, I'm going to ask for time on it, but
Yeah.
It's just, because I, I won't support this either.
Nor do I.
All right.
Well, you got to shock me to know I haven't a opinion.
No, let me, let me just share it at some perspective. First of all, there's certainly no problem taking time. What Mr. Powell's pointing out, those regulations that you referred to are the ones that are already in place and have been codified for medical marijuana. Uh, and in answer to your question, Mr. Schaefer, this would not impact medical marijuana. This is strictly recreational. So there is time, and it's probably a good discussion, you know, for the city to have. Um, the, uh, there is time because they haven't, they have not, uh, acted in Columbus yet. And then when they do, then they're going to have to adopt regulations. And it's going to be, I keep hearing like, you know, late fall, uh, if they're able to move smoothly, before they'll actually be in a position of actually issuing licenses. Uh, and so you certainly got time to have a discussion on this. The only pro or con, should we have these or should we not? That's going to be an interesting discussion, you know? Uh, it's, uh, you can argue it's an attractive nuisance, you know what I'm saying? You know, maybe if it's, I, I don't know the answer to that one. And, 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 uh, but more pertinent to what we've been talking about tonight regarding development, et cetera, is if, you know, not necessarily are we going to not have them, but if we're going to have them, where should they be? All right? And not just necessarily five hundred feet from the school, all right?
Right.
That, you know, maybe we want to say that, you know, I, you know, once we take a look at our zoning districts and say, where should, you know, this type of dispensary be? Um, you know, I think that's, that, you know, that, that sort of tends more towards, let's see what's coming out of zoning before we decide that we're going to allow these as opposed to just opening the door. Uh, I'm sure we're going to be okay either way.
I think so.
I expect we will. But certainly can, can take some time. And it'll be interesting to hear what people have to say.
I think that's going to be the key. This will open up and take a chance on your people or chance. And look how many other things that people talk to this year, talk about, that we got totally different pictures from so many people.
That was my main thought in bringing this one, because I think this is what started our conversation. And then it was like, wait a minute, the, the small, uh, storage thing might expire. And so I, I, I hope that council, I hope we can continue to do this, bring legislation forward through discussion sake. I think it's kind of interesting that every bill that we've had on council for a long time has passed. And almost all of them unanimously tell them like, no. You remember one that's failed?
Just something that had been withdrawn.
Okay. So, you know, that, that, that's my thought process. Is any council person can, can, can bring legislation forward? We have an open debate. The public gets to see the agenda. It's an opportunity for the public to show and give their thoughts. Um, so that's, that's really where I'm at. So I definitely would like time on this. And I think that if we're going to do it, although when, when I thought of this, I didn't think of the concept of us being able to repeal it. Uh, but I like the idea of having the language that says, uh, until recreational is defined by the state.
I think there is, I'm sorry, there is a language in, in section one that says for a period of twelve months, uh, or such earlier time, uh, as determined by action of council. So the, the hook was already actually, but, but, the hook, uh, uh, kind of connecting it to the action in Columbus makes sense. So we'll have to look at what Green did, maybe we might want to incorporate that language for consideration, if that's, if that's what we want to do. So.
I'm still trying to, so, believe it or not, cannabis is in every town, right? I mean, it's, it's here. And I think by putting a ban on it, you're just making an economic zone for the illegal activity. It's still going. Um, it's happening. That ship has sailed. Um, and the quicker we get around that, the better. I love what Mr. Cox said. I think that's, I think it's an opportunity for New Franklin. Now, now we're talking about a moratorium because we don't know where it fits. Like, well, I, I, I sort of get, that's convinced me, I'm big, are those box, whatever those things, small box stores. I understand why. There's a, there's an economic reason, we might not be able to get it. I understand the storage unit, one employee, lots of, not a lot of big economic, plus it will ruin our plan for our downtown if somebody came in. I get that. This one I don't. I don't understand, like, we wouldn't want it in that area. Uh, you know, it just, um, I just hope that we're not, you know, we are regulating, we have that right. That's in the, it's in the law. But are we reinstituting the prohibition? You know what I mean? Under the rules of regulating, banning what basically are people's sales, people's spoken, I know that you did cities, but you count, some county passed it. Stark County, no, Stark County not, the dining county passed it, um, which are sort of, sort of remaining areas. Um, and even with that, so I, I, I really think, I, I didn't even think of it until Mr. Cox said that. I think there's a great opportunity, because I think there's lots of revenue here. There's many people that don't want, you know, there's the digital benefits to cannabis that people won't do it illegally. So, um, I think it's an opportunity for New Franklin. So I, I'm definitely, I'm just not for the moratorium on that.
That's a really safe source as well.
Yeah, correct. Yeah.
Mr. Wolf, I, I agree with you. I think, I, I don't think we should be looking at these types of businesses as, uh, something in the red light district or, or a sleazy operation. These, these are most likely, there's a lot of money being invested in these businesses. And these, these are going to be, uh, from what I've seen in other states, these, these are going to be, uh, well-run, professional operations. And, uh, I, I, you know, I think they'd be perfectly fine in any environment, in any part of our city, uh, within the rules of the state. Uh, but they're, they're not going to be a sleazy type of business, because there's too much money involved. So they have to do it right, and they're going to do it right. And, uh, in the other states that do this, that's what you see. So, uh.
Excellent debate. Thank you very much. That's
Well, I would, I would add that, being the youngest lady who's most conservative on this topic. But, um, you know, I was with the DARE program. I think everybody here went through the DARE program as well. When you guys went, I went to Nolly, Manchester Middle School, High School.
I went through the Green Way.
You know, but, you know, I think of this, there's the tax revenue, but I think of the neighborhood character of what makes New Franklin, New Franklin. And that's what we're deciding with these, you know, these marijuana, recreational, medical, you know, medical's different from recreational by far. And a doctor who knows a lot more than I do has prescribed it for somebody for many different elements. Recreational's different. I don't think it'd benefit the city in its character. And the fact, you know, smoking's bad. There's smoking marijuana, it's bad as well. And I don't know how many associated crimes there are with it. But I really think it plays on the city's character as it is at the end of the day. And I don't think
There's many ways to adjust it.
Yeah, I'm just saying, this may not necessarily be combustion, this could
Yeah. And I looked up a little bit from the, uh, I mean, looked a little bit for the nationalists' views. And this is this conflicting report. So it looks like they don't really understand themselves at what it could be negative or positive, either way. So I don't want to, you know, jump on this. We don't even know what the state's going to do yet. We don't, I don't think they'll do anything wild, but there is still the possibility of doing something that is not New Franklin.
What about alcohol? What are the effects? How do you stand on alcohol?
I don't drink.
Okay.
I don't drink.
Do you think it should be available for people over twenty-one?
Yeah, you have the right to do that. Correct, but you're understanding that this has been banned for a while for multiple reasons.
Well, it's been legal
And I think that you associated proponents with this.
It's been legal in this country since its founding and up until nineteen thirty-seven, when they put a tax on it to make it illegal. So we were in prohibition period up until just November, December when it became legal. Um, no, I appreciate, I, I really do see it as, I, I have seen many studies that if you want to try and go, go to Michigan sometime and try to get in there without an ID, they have police not protecting the, they're protecting the sellers, because there's a lot of cap. You cannot even get in the door without, and not just showing an ID, it has to go in that little reader, and it's highly regulated. I would question, are there bars in this area that maybe a young person has gone in and got it? So it will be highly regulated. Um, we're adults. Um, we should make choices. And I'm looking for, I, in my promise to be honest, council is to try to find ways where we can reduce the tax burden. And I don't know about a way right now. Um, I just don't want to limit it. Still, we need to see it and look at it. But this, the moratorium just feels weird to me. Um, so anyways, I appreciate it.
Yeah. I mean, at the end of the day, I do not see it enhancing New Franklin's character for the better, whether it's tax burden or not.
Got it.
Any other comments on this? Any other comments?
Yes.
That's right. Uh, Mr. Alman, as much as I respect that, our character is not based on our establishments. We have alcohol drive-throughs. People drive-through, get their alcohol, either drink it in the car or go home. That's up to them. It's readily available. Okay? Um, are they all checking IDs? We don't know. We hope they do. Okay? But again, as they mentioned, this is regulated. You will be showing IDs. You will be tracked. The health department is going to be in there probably weekly, making sure everything is correct. Okay? But that's, that's just my opinion. Um, as far as being the drug capital, not harder than the cream, um, we can always accept them into the community, limited to one or two, for up to two years or up to five years. And then seeing how, you know, they work within the community, what type of income they bring, what type of riffraff they bring. Then we can either increase and put them on every corner like a small box store, or, um, whatnot, you know, keep it limited. Um, before this was passed, I don't partake. I don't do medical or recreational. But I know people who would drive to Michigan. They would drive out of state on the weekends to get their product. They were spending all that gas and all that money to go there and bring it back. Whereas if we can tax even just one store, and if we get the three percent income, that's revenue for us. Whereas if we don't permit it, they'll go next door, you know, to another neighboring county and give them our funds. No, it's not going to be hundreds and thousands of dollars. I mean, maybe it will. I don't know. I, I don't know. I don't know anything about it. But that's taking money out of our citizens' mouths in area to make it nicer.
Can I get your name? I'm sorry.
Oh, my name's Carol. I'm sorry.
Nice to meet you, Carol. I would like to say, don't stand alone. Other states around us have passed more crimes, especially with the fear of what the state could do. And we have reacted and reacted on an issue like this especially, I believe. So that's why I am for the moratorium.
Mm-hmm. Well, and, and I'm not speaking just to you, and I apologize. Um, and, and again, it's with the legal establishment, it's better than buying it from Johnny by the phone booth, you know, illegally.
No, yeah, we, I believe that we have enabled the illegal.
I don't even know if that phone booth's still in.
You might not bring it to our conference either, huh?
No, no, my kids were in the DARE program. Yeah, I was.
I think we've had some really good debate tonight. And the fact that we're going to ask for time means that we get to have debate again. Carrie, do you want to slide in and something quickly?
Just real quick, given the fact that the state has not come up with regulations yet, and these cannot be planned or built until that happens, that gives us a time, whether we have the moratorium or not, for the zoning to be rewritten, to put any specific things in place if that's desired. I think there's a workshop tomorrow that's, uh, going through some of the code for something similar.
Real quickly, on, on those two topics, um, you mentioned limiting the number. Right now, we don't have that capacity. So we could get applications for thirty of them all at once. I'm not saying that's likely. But that's a good example of where there is no definition. What we have is definitions on medical. We're making a lot of assumptions that those definitions are going to carry on to recreational. So I love this debate. Thank you very much. I say let's, you know, we're going to, we're going to move it on for a couple of weeks. So we're not voting tonight. So maybe there'll be more people with more thoughts and ideas and more community involvement.
All right. I think I get to work for longest committee here.
You do.
I'd like to close the Republican committee at six forty-eight.
Uh, and next we have Mr. Schaefer with the committee development.
All right, the health, uh, committee development committee at six forty-seven. Um, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash nineteen, resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Abrams and the contactings with the destruction of the, of the vision and real parks and declaring emergency. So I'm going to turn this over to Paul in just a second. Mr. Anderson, I have a few questions. I was at the meeting to ask a few questions. And unless you kind of run through things and try to answer those questions at the same time. Uh, we have a couple of bids here. Abrams, it seemed that it had a really good quality bid. I believe it was talked about the concrete for the floor. I don't really see anything bid-wise on that. I'd like you to talk about the swing set area that was also talked about in that parks meeting. Um, a couple of things I'd like to see that come from any of the park meetings that come to council that we don't really get to see. Um, I don't think there's going to be a water issue with this one. Um, but I know there's some talk and sister feeling things that there may be water issues and some of that stuff that's down there. So I'd always like, when this type of stuff comes to council, that water issues are addressed. Um, I'd like to see a plan, a drawing in the park. I'd like to see a big fat X where this is going to go. Haven't talked about any future items in that park, and how is this appropriate? Are we going to encumber putting the other, you know, items for kids to play on by what we put the pavilion? You know, just, are we talking, you know, do we put some pot into, is this the best location for the pavilion? Or is this a quick fix? Uh, the last thing I'd like you to address is, um, the cost to the city. I know that the road department is in charge of maintenance. Um, but these things like this, if we're, if we're doubling ground, uh, or putting in a walk path or anything of that nature that has a, that we have to have our road department come in. That's not maintenance, that is improvements or development. And to my knowledge in the past, we've never taken money from the parks budget, paid for the expenses the service department has incurred, and we just take the money out of the service department. I don't think that's the proper way to do it. So what I'd like you to do is, Mr. Anderson, go ahead and
Sure. I'll fire away. Um, gosh, last thing first, and this will take some further discussion. But, um, I will, we, we've had that discussion before about the service department, uh, utilizing their workforce to assist in, in parks. And, uh, there's authority for that, that part of the responsibility of the service department is the parks. Uh, but it's a good point that it ought to be considered, you know, labor, manpower, those kind of things, uh, should, uh, should that come out of parks budget. Uh, all right, specific to this project, um, a couple of things. First of all, the, the resolution itself, uh, the, we got three bids. Uh, we went through, we put the plans together. There's no lights, there's no electric for this pavilion. Let me go back a step further. We had several meetings out at Rill over the last year, maybe a year and a half. We had several meetings out at Grille over the last year, maybe a year and a half, and we, we, we put together a loose-knit group of advisory group of people who had reached out to us and spoken to us, and, uh, I got their names all in there, and we had them at the park and had discussions with the park commission, uh, as to, okay, what would you folks like to see and where we're going to see it? Some of those things have already come to fruit. Uh, they had, uh, the, the ball fields didn't have screens in front of the benches, so we got screens in front of the benches. Uh, there were some fences that, uh, that needed, uh, installed, we installed some fences. Uh, there was some equipment that was dilapidated and dangerous, um, and, uh, that was removed. Um, the, uh, and, and so what else would you like to see? Well, they'd like to be able to get out of the sun. There's two ball fields there, and that's where their T-bongers play, the young kids. Uh, and this is the location of the old Grille School. Uh, so there's an existing playground which fortunately has the old rubber chips, which is, is going to be very helpful to us when we get to the swing sets, because we're not going to have to spend the money, you know, we can use that for the service for the swing sets. So that's what we heard from people, we'd like to have a pavilion, uh, some of the things I already said they wanted and we did, uh, and, uh, and then they'd like to have a swing set. Uh, and there, there is some existing playground equipment still there, so we looked, the, the parks commission looked at a variety of, of options. One is really a full-scale playground set with fifty, sixty thousand dollars. Well, at first we looked like the all-inclusive ones and we were up about two hundred thousand dollars. So then we looked at, well, maybe something a little bit more intensive, it was around fifty thousand dollars. And finally, the parks commission, we looked at just swings, uh, and, and let's start with that, uh, and, uh, in addition to what's already there, and then get a read of, you know, who's, who's coming to use these and we can always add a little bit more later. Uh, so we have, uh, we have a cost estimate on the, on the swing sets and the six stations, six swings, and two of them have the, uh, the, the stuff that you have in them with, you know, for the kids to swing on and, uh, for the folks that are disabled, you know, so, and then, uh, four are regular swings. Somebody mentioned, let's get a circle swing, raise your hand if you know what a circle swing is.
I guess you do.
Okay, and that's good. Uh, and so, uh, we got a price on that as well, and, uh, altogether it's going to be about thirteen thousand dollars, uh, and you'll have that resolution next time, uh, at the next meeting. Uh, in terms of location, we have spent a lot of time and sat with the people out there and, uh, but you're taking a good point. For council's perspective, it would probably be good to have a floor, you know, go out and take a look, I mean, or, or have a, a plan, there's no reason why we can't give you a, a site plan, uh, of where it is. So we had a, a general consensus from the folks who were out there, um, I guess it was last fall, last, last, summer and last fall. Uh, the layout, as you know, of that park, Kumble Road is here, actually, I don't know, I'm going to call it here, all right? And then this is a long rectangular lot, the two ball fields sit at the back. Uh, there's a little basketball hoop right in the middle, there's grass on this side of the basketball hoop, there's concrete or asphalt here that we're tearing up and going to plant seed. And right now, that's planning to be the, the service department to do that, so I'll tell you. Uh, and, uh, and so there'll be grass on both sides of this basketball hoop. Uh, there's parking here, and there's parking up on, uh, at Kumble. Now, the rest of it is all green space. To the, on the left-hand side is the playground, and the, uh, existing playground takes up about, I mean, if this is the, where the rubber chips are, this, this table right here, the existing playground takes up about this much of it. Uh, and so the intention is to put the swings here, there, uh, and then the pavilion will go straight out and be centered between the parking lot and between the playground here so that people can be in the pavilion and watch the kids on, you know, at the playground, they'd also be in a position where they can actually still see the ball fields, uh, and it's close enough for, for use. What we have left, we are through this morning as a matter of fact, to kind of decide on the final, the exact, exact location. Um, it, the, the overall, um, what I've indicated as, as where the, uh, the playground part of it is, if you go straight out from there, that's pretty close to the end of the parking on this section, the driveway comes in and then there's parking. We've got a, a lot of green space between there and the street, and so there's room for further, and the parks have talked about this, and there's room for further development on there. What, we're not exactly sure, um, might be pickleball courts if they stay that popular, okay? It'd be bocce courts, uh, no? Okay. Uh, you know, I don't know, you know, or they'll just stay green space and just be a park. Um, so that's, that's the plan, and the parks, they, we've spent a lot of time, the parks commission has spent a lot of time, uh, and so they, they recommended this course of action, they recommended the resolution, you know, the, that, uh, that be awarded to Abrams, uh, he was significantly in the work, uh, and, uh, that's who did the Sisler. Uh, so let me see, uh, going forward, um, I guess I've talked to you about the swing set and the pavilion, um, and, and how we reached that point, but we can give you, we should give you a footprint, uh, in the future and let you see how this looks. The concrete, uh, and this was not a formal bid process, uh, we weren't required, in Ohio, you're not required to bid anymore until you're, unless you have seventy-five thousand dollars. So we weren't required to bid, but we wanted to do it, we did it pretty close to the bid concept, uh, the, our engineer put together the, the design for the, for the structure, uh, and sent out for bids on that, we advertised it, we put it on the websites and, and, uh, sent it out to the interested part that obviously we thought might be interested. We did the same as a separate proposal with the concrete, uh, and on that one, so on that one, we had, uh, let me see here, seven bids for the concrete, uh, and they ranged anywhere from a low of, uh, eight thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars to a high of seventeen thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars, uh, and in between, we had a thirteen thousand, a twelve thousand, a fifteen thousand, ninety-eight hundred, ninety-three hundred, and Bell's Custom Concrete was the lowest at eight eight hundred and ninety-two dollars. So, uh, I wanted to share that with you, uh, the intention of the parks commission recommended we go with Bell's, Bell's had done work for us in the past and were satisfied with their work. Uh, because it's not more than ten thousand, it doesn't require a resolution, I certainly intended to let you know that that was the direction that we planned on going. And all in all, uh, we're, we're pretty pleased that, uh, we're going to be able to do this pavilion for, um, you know, around thirty thousand dollars. That's a concrete and a pavilion, and, uh, that sort of dovetails into what other plans the parks have, we can talk, I'll talk about that in my report, but, uh, so, uh, I guess that's what we got.
One, one thing that Barry mentioned was about the, uh, you know, the service doing work on, on parks properties and then not compensating, not returning the, the wages essentially back to the service department funds, which kind of straps them for resources, I don't say straps, it pulls resources from the service budget, and we talk about that in budget meetings and stuff. Is there any, uh, desire to pay whatever they're doing parks work out of the parks budget?
If I may, jump in on that, as, as I understood it, um, the, the parks are under the service department, uh, and it's the service department's responsibility, as Mr. Shaker said, to maintain the parks. Uh, I, I think where, one of the issues that we have, uh, and I, I think you're probably going along the same lines, Mr. Powell, is, uh, uh, when we're doing improvements to the park, so the, uh, I believe as the, um, the income tax code says for us that five percent goes to the park for park improvements.
Yes.
Uh, so as far as maintenance, as far as ripping up that, um, asphalt area and planting grass seed, uh, that I believe would fall under the service department's realm of responsibilities. But if, if they're doing something, uh, such as going out and preparing the land for the pavilion, that is a, a, uh, that, that's, that's, that's an upgrade. That's, that's something beyond maintenance, and I think, uh, if they're performing duties in those types of situations, then, uh, uh, they should build the parks department for time and equipment.
For improvement, yes.
For, for improvement.
Uh, I knew I had read it somewhere, okay? And, and it's in our, uh, and I thought it was in the charter, and it is, under section six point oh-six, Director of Public Service, uh, the mayor gets to be the Director of Public Services, but that's not the point. Uh, subsection B is Powers and Duties. The Director of Public Service shall make all necessary rules and regulations for the governing of the Department of Public Service and the operation of the divisions thereof. And here's a pertinent part, the department shall include, but not be limited to, Division of Cemeteries, Custodial Services, Health and Environment, Highways, Parks and Recreation, and Planning and Zoning. So Parks and Recreation, it was included in the charter as a responsibility of the service department, um, and as you know, it's funded for five percent of the income tax. In a sense, I don't know, I, sometimes we get into left pocket, right pocket, you know? Uh, and, uh, you know, if we, uh, I hate to, if, if we're able to do it, and he has a crew that can do it, I get it, we could put a dollar amount on that, but, you know, if, if that has to come out of the parks, then that's, that's money we're not spending on recreation. So I, I mean, I'm open to discussion on it, and, and I think you make a good, you know, I think there's a fine line, you know, there's a line somewhere where we ought to say, this isn't traditional stuff. I, I get your point on that. Um, uh, I, I think it's something we have to pay attention to as we go forward, but most of the time, it's just a matter of, you know, for instance, capital grant, we got three hundred thousand dollars to do what, you know, as much as we can do with the Tudor House, man, we want to get that stuff done. Well, if we have a contractor that's going to have to dig the lines to put in the conduit, that's going to cost us, you know, fifteen grand, well, right now, we can pull a couple guys away and do that, and we don't have to spend, we can spend that fifteen grand on lights and benches and stuff like that. So that's really where, that's, that's where the balance comes in, trying to find the right balance on it, without abusing the parks, I mean, the service department. And I'll finally say, Brian's pretty good about telling us, no, we can't do that.
Well, can I understand you when you read that? I apologize, I interrupted you. You said the director shall make all the rules, is that what you stated? Service director?
That's what the.
That's what you read from the charter, that's what I understood.
Yes, yes, yes. That's what the current charter says.
What does that mean to you?
Director shall make all necessary rules and regulations for governing, uh, of the service department. Well, gosh.
Wouldn't he make the final decision to do that or not?
Oh.
If Brian says we can't afford it, does he need more money?
I could, you know, there'd be a, there'd be a, a basis for that argument, you know, I don't know if, uh, I mean, I'm not going to lie, yes.
Well, that's, I'm, that's.
You could, you could make a good argument that the discretion lies with the Director of Service as to what he does in those regards. Um, uh, having said that, I mean, I'm always interested in consensus, you know, I, I, hopefully, I, I, and I know you weren't implying that.
No.
I'd rather be handing, hey, listen, that's my job.
Well, no, no, I did not, I was just listening to what you read, and that's what you read.
That's what it says.
Well, I can, I appreciate all that, I do appreciate using the service department, uh, which definitely saves us money on these, these things, uh, as opposed to hiring an outside contractor, that, that seems like the best way to go. What I have to turn to is pulling the money from the service department for some things that, uh, would be, in my opinion, upgrades, right? I agree with, uh, Mr. Constance, the asphalt removal, that's definitely a maintenance thing, that's something that the service department should, should handle. Some of the sort of stuff that we're asking the service department to do, hey, maybe we should be setting a dollar amount, maybe if it's like a thousand dollar or under, we don't sweat it, it moves, uh, moves to, if it's, uh, something bigger than that, then we got to fund the, the service department back with the money from the parks. That money is set for the parks to be done, those items are being done in the park, it seems like it should come out of that budget.
I, I'm certainly open to reconsidering that.
Right.
And, and going forward, um, as we, you know, as we use them, give careful consideration of that, but have further discussion on that, I'm open to that.
If I, if I could use your example of the fifteen thousand dollar subcontractor, so, uh, the, the, the three hundred thousand dollar grant is a perfect example, so I, I don't think anyone is suggesting that we spend fifteen thousand dollars and not use the service department. What I think is, let's say it costs the service department three thousand dollars, what I'm saying is that that, out of that three hundred thousand dollar grant, three thousand dollars goes to the, goes to the service department so that we can put that in pavement on the road, because I think that's where that's budgeted. And I've been in these budget meetings now for two years, Mr. Powell and I, and the one department that has to fight for every nickel and dime is the service department.
Right.
So the, the, the concept of wasting the money or spending the money outside, fifteen thousand dollars is not what anybody's suggesting, it's making the service department whole for their time and maybe a little something for their equipment.
I think that's, that's exactly what we were looking at, because if these guys are there, say the Tudor House, working for two weeks, that's two weeks less of work that are getting done out in the area that the residents are benefiting from, so if we can just cover the cost to service for that two weeks or whatever that was, and that allows them to maybe work a couple Saturdays here, they're just getting caught up on the work they got foregone for going to work somewhere else.
And it is left pocket, right pocket, literally. Absolutely, that's okay, because, because we've got the budget, we want to save the money by using the service department, we just want them to be whole so that when it comes time to buy a snowplow, they're not second guessing that because, well, you, you know, spent twenty-five thousand dollars in your budget, you want to upgrade.
I do want to, I don't want to leave this conversation without saying, uh, I can't think in recent memory of any extensive project, in, in any situation where we pull guys, and I know that you were just giving an example, Mr. Powell, where we had guys working for two weeks at the Tudor House, that's, that has not happened, okay? We'll have guys, you know, for a day here or half a day there or something like that, so, but I still think it's an area that we need to be sensitive to. I appreciate you bringing that up.
Well, I'm a little tight with my money, I'm a little tight with the city's money.
You're here.
Hey, you know, I guess one of the steps that we should be looking at on the, and I said it in the parks meeting, I'll be first to say I hope the parks board, they do a wonderful job, I'll also say that I think this pavilion is a, is something that's needed at your own park for residents that would use that area, so I'm, I'm for that, but what I'd like to see is those things I mentioned, I don't want to have to guess where it's going, I want to be able to go out there and have a little printout and say, yep, that's where the X is going to be. I want to, you know, make sure we address any water issues, because we know we have some previous water issues from a project that the school board was in charge of, and we don't have any control over that, um, but I don't want to be in a position where I got people calling me and having water issues. But again, we'd like to make sure the service department is whole for what I consider a, a great job that they do and, uh, and, uh, cost savings for the, for the city. So I guess what we need to know is, are we going to ask for time, are we going to waive the treaty?
You, you brought up a lot of questions, so I guess if President D. P. you think we need to get definition of these questions.
Well, I think I would like definition of the question paper. Here's a protocol question for you that I don't have the answer to. When we get a resolution with this, can we pass it with stipulations?
You can amend it.
You can amend it and say subject to, but I don't, do we need, do we need to pass this today? It'd probably be easier to just ask for time.
Yeah, and if you let me know specifically what you want, I'll get it for you. That, I mean, if you want a, a, a site plan, I'll get that for you. If you want to go out and meet it there tomorrow, I'll go with you, whatever you need, you know?
A site plan would be awesome, uh, I'd like to get the, the service department to say, hey, this is the work that's going to be required from us, it's going to be two hours in a big deal, it's going to be two thousand dollars estimated in our, our labor, whatever it may be.
There is no, uh, this project, this pavilion would not involve any of the service department.
So you don't think they would have to prep the land for the, for the pavilion?
I was going to say, that's contractors.
Okay, I, I think the issue is that.
I don't see.
All right, well, I'll find out.
Well, then, how about that, you go back to Abrams and, uh, they write in their, their quote that they're responsible for all the, the land prep.
Those are good questions, I'll, I'll get you a site plan, we'll find out if there's any prep, if the service department's going to be involved, I'll find out how many hours, I'll get you a price quote on it, so.
I wouldn't see that. I think it would be Bell that would prep it, because isn't he?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
So I think the best reason you don't see it on here, because I'm thinking Bell would prep it before they, because they wanted a certain length.
Yeah, and I don't have a respect.
Very nice.
I'd have to look.
Yeah, we didn't see that.
I'll have to look at the quote, it probably was in the proposal, I, you know, that's not my bible, I didn't pay attention to that.
It'd be nice to have those initial proposals, you know, we don't have to vote on them, we don't really have a decision to make there, but it does, in the whole picture, you know, give us a picture of the, the whole park.
So given the fact that our committee meetings have gone about six times what they normally are, is it okay to just ask for time and, and then take two weeks to get along? are, is it okay to just ask for time and then take two weeks to get a little more information? You can ask them their questions, okay?
So we'll ask for time and we'll propose the committee's vote, maybe seven, twelve.
No, I think it's all proposed, it's done.
Yes, they want to exactly change.
Okay, next, we have Mrs. Jones. Hopefully, this committee won't take as long, but if there's that much discussion, then we'll-
No, no, it won't.
This is the safety committee.
Resolution number 24R20, resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into a four-year extension of the agreement with Manchester Local Schools for Police Services and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. In 2021, we had a contract with Manchester Schools, and they paid $40,000 a year for us to provide a full-time officer. Now, they renegotiated, am I correct on this call, and they now wish that they have $70,000 to you?
Yes, yes, it's, here's what we have there, if I may, Mrs. Jones. All right, yeah, this was, the original contract was 40, and that was an estimate at that time of about 75% of what it costs for the officer, because basically, you're going to be nine months there, three months here. And so, before this one expired, they found a need for a second officer. And I think, you know, you don't have to, unfortunately, things that are happening around the country made that necessary. So we did approve, council did approve in 2022, a second officer. Now, the first officer is Jason Turbich, and he's, they love him, and he does a fabulous, fabulous job, and he enjoys it, and he's still there. The second physician was posted, and it was a first-year officer who's also doing a fabulous job. But that number came in at that point in time, this was from 2022 to 2023 through 2020, the school year, fall '25 to '26, $64,385. So that contract exists separately for the second officer. This contract now is a renewal of the first officer, and it hadn't been revisited for a period of time. We had discussion with them, and 70,000 was the number that was, they were willing to agree to, and we felt was, that we could live with that as well. So that's the history on it, and this would be a four-year, and, you know, I think it's, a couple things, obviously, it's important for the school to know, for their budgetary purposes, these next four years are going to be very interesting for the school, as they try to finish up that building. It's not like we're giving charity, but now they know what's in the budget if council decides to approve. And finally, you know, we all say this, but I'm going to say it first, there is a huge benefit, two things come up. One is, we got four school districts in New Franklin, okay, but we only have one that has schools here. And the other schools do what Manchester has done, they use local law enforcement, and they have contracts with local law enforcement. Norton does that, and Coventry has a sheriff in Northwest with a sheriff down there. But the second thing is, boy, the important, what we see as the benefits, you folks know this, I should let you say it, you know?
We do, we love Jake, I have to say, nobody does it better. He's just terrific, we'd be watching with the kids, he knows them, he likes them, he's just a nice boy. I don't know the second officer, but the vision of the end is excellent.
Yeah, and the other was a graduate, played football, the other was a graduate.
John Beavers.
John Beavers. And, yeah, they loved him as well. You know, the benefits for the community, we see it, in what doesn't happen, knock on wood, you know? That we don't see a lot of the juvenile problems that we have in so many other areas of the city, and I think that's a tribute to the school, but it's also a tribute to the relationships that are built for these officers. And so I think there's a real big plus to the city here, so anyway.
I agree, Paul, I don't think, I have not heard one complaint about it, quite honestly. And as I said, when I've been up at the school, when you see the interaction, that relationship is terribly important for young people to know they can depend upon law enforcement, because that doesn't always happen.
And can rely on our law enforcement. So they could have, they could have a, you know, a security person, they could hire the county sheriff, but they have a New Franklin, a New Franklin police officer there, wearing our badge, with our car, I think it says a lot, it's a win-win, I can't say enough about it, I can't, I can't think of any negative to it. And you pointed out Norton and Coventry and Northwest, those cities, or those communities are paying for students of New Franklin who go to their buildings, so we should be paying for these as well. And it's actually, excuse me, they're paying us. We're actually approving the school district to pay the city here, so I just can't think of anything.
Does anyone else have any comments?
I think it's started pointing out that they're paying for what, 75% of the officer's cost to us, so we still get to utilize it through the summer. And I think you answered my own question, the only other question I had was, this does not impact 22R46, which was the second officer.
Right. You know, and then we have that extra officer if we need him, right? Through the nine months, God forbid we have an emergency that we need, we got a guy who's already here, you know, and ready to go.
Does anyone in the audience have a question? Then would everybody, you know, things waiting for three? And I'll close my meeting at 7:19.
That was the fastest committee meeting, let's see if Mr. Cox can meet with finance.
Okay.
Thank you. Will we open the finance committee at 7:17? Resolution 24R21, resolution authorizing modifications to the 2024 Annual Operating Appropriations Budget, declaring emergency. Ms. Coke, you have 30 seconds.
I don't know if I can do this in 30 seconds, but it's just basically a couple modi, well, three modifications. One of the parks capital improvement funds, capital improvement funds for the fire department and fire losses, which are just modifications from what came from the actual, our ending balances. So these are just, we had to reduce the capital fire improvements based on their ending balance, because we, as you recall, when we set up the first appropriations, that's based on estimated ending balances, now we have the actual ending balances, and these are just the adjustments for that. Not 30 seconds, but quick as I can.
This is exactly what we expect when we do the budget process in the fall, so this is, this is the, I guess, a side effect or the result of more-
You shaved off-
-council involvement, so.
Any other questions or comments? I'm on the clock here. Wave the three?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Moving on, resolution 24R22, resolution authorizing transfer funds from the Parks and Recreation Fund to the Parks and Recreation Capital Projects Fund and declaring an emergency. This is for $75,000, is our 2023 installment for the pickleball course. Questions, comments? Wave the three? Closing the finance committee meeting at 7:18.
Just saying, Mrs. Jones, he did two resolutions in less time than you did.
I know, that's why I'm right, I deserve that. I want you to know, Jake, two minutes off.
Yeah? All right, so that ends committee meetings, I have two, yeah, exactly, that was, that was quite a, quite a little committee meeting. I have to make an announcement about a hearing, and I can't find it.
Oh, God, darn. Why don't you date it with my notes?
I wrote it on, somewhere here.
A post-it note really helps.
I know it was.
We'll see, put your thinking cap on.
So I can't believe.
You wrote it on the beginning of whatever you say at the beginning of it.
Oh, thank you.
No, she was on the other page.
Yeah, I know.
Mr. Powell, we think five-minute break while you-
We're actually adding this time to your meeting objectives, and it's right now.
Got it.
So I need to make an announcement that there will be a public hearing before the meeting on March 20th of 2024, for the renewal of applications for properties within an agricultural district. So that's going to happen, that happens every year, we're going to do that at the next meeting, which is March 20th. If you have property in an agricultural district and you're going to do CAEP, you need to make sure you're at that meeting, or you're represented at that meeting. Okay, and then one more thing, we've got the citizen of the month. This is the very first one of these, I really, really want to commend Mr. Powell for his efforts here, I think this is a great, great thing that we're doing, it's going to bring, again, we're all about community involvement, and I think, I think that's a great thing. So Carol Stesney, did I say it right? Sorry, I didn't look at your last name before. I had Carol down. So Carol lives in Melody Village, I'm not sure if everybody knows where Melody Village is, with the way our community is divided up, it's in the Norton School District, it's up in the northwest corner of New Franklin, and it's a very nice, tight-knit little community. And when you have something like a neighborhood, let's call it, we call it a neighborhood, development, sometimes somebody stands out in your development and does things that nobody else even thinks that need done, and Carol is most certainly one of those people. I've heard about her for a number of years, I didn't realize, you just moved here in 2019?
Correct.
So in five years, she's really had an impact. A couple of the things that are worthy of mentioning, you know, there's a mailbox decorating that happens around Christmas time, that's a big deal, to have your neighborhood have some consistency like that, organization of yard sales, stuff like that, a lot of people live in communities where that happens, you assume somebody else does all the work, well, here she is, she's the one that does the work and gets that stuff done. This kind of blew my mind when I went, I had asked Mr. Powell, I said, are you sure you worded that right? He said, yep. She has given a Christmas gift to each house?
We have 214 houses on the Melo, on the musical name streets, and I have handmade gifts for the past four years. Well, this year I decorated the mailboxes, but, yeah, I give out gifts to every home.
So that, if you wanted, you know, I'm big about a sense of community, we live in a small town, and knowing and loving your neighbors and being a part of our community is key, and Carol, I can't think of anybody who would have done anything to celebrate the love of your neighborhood, the love of your community more than that. I hear the next project is going to be some Easter project that you're thinking about, to bring Easter into the concept?
I am, I am trying to think of a good Easter program, not this year, but for next year, that we can do an Easter egg hunt throughout the village.
There you go. So having said that, Mary Hammond, would you like to go up here with me? Come on. I would like to present Carol Stesney, Stesney, with the very first, the very first-
You're fine, you're fine.
Citizen of the month. No, we're following our agenda.
I'm holding.
All right, let's look at Mr. Powell. All right, fair deal, thank you very much.
I don't know, when I moved in, I was really amazed at how homey and how welcoming it was, and it's just, I call it my own little Mayberry, because everybody accepted me and everybody knows everybody else, so it's just a nice name for it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think that's all the special stuff, all the committee stuff, now we start a regular meeting. Why don't we take a five-minute break? You really want a five-minute? Yeah, sorry. We're going to take a five-minute break.
She needed time.
That's better than a one minute.
That's why you made it up.
Yeah, exactly, you just write that thing up, there you go. You definitely stretched the room. For those of you who are hanging in the committee meetings ever since-
I was nominated, I was just standing, I was nominated, I made my journey, I'm right here. But that's-
Really cool. Something, something, yeah, something, yeah.
I was a child, I was a child. 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 I was a child.
All right, I think that was five minutes, so we're going to call the quarter, the regular meeting of the City of New Franklin, with the pledge of leave.
I play twenty.
I have six, twenty-nine. Seven, twenty-nine, sorry.
I play the lead. United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, thank you. Kelly, can you go over?
Mr. Cox?
Present.
Mrs. Shaper?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Present.
Mr. Wolf?
Present.
Mr. Ahmond?
Present. All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular scheduled meeting from February 21st, 2024.
Second.
The first and the second, Kelly?
Mr. Shaper?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Standing.
Mr. Ahmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes. Motion passes. And now is the time for official public comment, we ask that you keep your comment down to four minutes, if you could, maybe a little quicker since we've come so long. Is there anyone that has any public comment? All right, hearing none. I am going to make a little statement here before we get into resolutions, that there's a Robert Rules of Order that we haven't followed, and I always thought it was odd, and I don't know why it got changed, but there's a first, a second, and then before we vote, right before you vote, the rules say that you should ask for discussion, so I'm going to do that a little bit different, I'm going to try and remember to anyway, so it'll be a first, a second, then discussion, then Kelly. So our first reading, Kelly, you can go ahead with 24R16.
A resolution imposing a moratorium on issuance or granting of applications or permits for public storage, mini storage, or self-storage facilities in the City of New Franklin, Ohio, for a period of one year, 365 days, and declaring an emergency.
This resolution was submitted to the Public Utilities Committee, and I'd like to make a motion to waive the three on resolution 24R16.
Second.
Any discussion? Kelly, call over.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Shaper?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 24R16.
Second.
Any discussion? Kelly, call over.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Shaper?
Yes. Motion passes.
Uh, present.
Kelly, resolution 24R17.
A resolution establishing a temporary moratorium on the establishment of a-
A resolution establishing a temporary moratorium on the establishment of adult-use cannabis operators and the issuance of zoning permits or any other permits for the building, structure, use, or change of use that would enable the cultivation, processing, or retail sale of recreational marijuana, and declaring an emergency.
This resolution was assigned to the Public Utilities Committee. I'd like to request time.
Time is requested, time is granted. Kelly, Resolution 24 R 18.
A resolution establishing a temporary moratorium on the establishment of a small-box discount stores and the issuance of zoning permits for any other permits, or any other permits for the building, structure, use, or change of use relating to the establishment or expansion of small-box discount stores, and declaring an emergency.
This resolution was assigned to the Public Utilities Committee. I'd like to make a motion to waive the three.
Second.
Any discussion? Kelly, call over.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Ahman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Shaffer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Ahman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Shaffer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Ahman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Shaffer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Ahman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Shaffer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Ahman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Shaffer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Resolution 24 R 20.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Abrams Family Contracting for the construction of a pavilion at Grill Park, and declaring an emergency.
This was dropped before the Community Development Committee, and we'd like to ask for time.
Time is requested, time is granted. Kelly, Resolution 24 R 20.
A resolution authorizing modifications to the 2024 annual operating appropriation budget, and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee. We move to waive the three readings on Resolution 24 R 21.
Second.
The first and the second, any discussion?
Mr. Ahman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Shaffer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Ahman?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 24 R 21.
Second.
Any discussion? Kelly?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Shaffer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Ahman?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 24 R 21.
Second.
Any discussion? Kelly?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Shaffer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Ahman?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 24 R 22. This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee. We move to waive the three readings on Resolution 24 R 22.
Second.
The first and the second, any discussion? Kelly?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Shaffer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 24 R 22.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Shaffer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Ahman?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
All right, we have no second or third readings or pending legislation, which leads us into drumroll, please. Our favorite rating of the mayor's report. All right, well, I better keep this one on the clock. I want to congratulate the polar bears on another successful jump and raised $175,000 or so for the Akron Camden Regional Food Bank. What a big deal, right in our backyard. So Kelly Parizo, and I've hit it, is it Heather?
Heather, yes.
Yeah, Heather, I think Heather does most of the work. Yeah, yeah. So hats off to them and for the continued efforts there. I want to congratulate our citizen of the month, Carol.
Thank you.
I want to congratulate Mr. Powell and council for putting this into play, and I think it's a really nice thing. And it occurred to me to thank Brian Listick too, the Southside leader. I'm serious, I couldn't agree more. You know, you're a huge part of, and a leader's commitment, but your personal commitment to getting the word out, getting the story out, and it's the kind of thing that's so easy to take for granted until it's not there. So we really, really appreciate it. Yeah, let's see, all right, give him a raise. And while we're doing thank yous, we received a lovely thank you letter from Margaret Frost at the last council meeting. Dr. James A. Frost was honored for achieving the age of 90 and for his contribution to the community. And Margaret Frost, and that was Jack Daniels, Councilman Daniels had a lot to do with that in council as well. I just wanted to thank you all for taking the time to honor my husband Jim for his special birthday. Ninety is after all quite an achievement. His children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren are very proud of him, who contributes to their lives and has for as long as they've been around. Jim knows he's not alone in varying contributions to our adopted community. There are certainly others who deserve to be recognized. He's just one of many wonderful folks, made that making, living in this city such a pleasure. And it was very kind of Bethany McKenney to bring this matter to everyone's attention, and she did spear this. Also very kind of all the council members to take the time from the busy agenda to listen. You are a remarkable group. Everyone who voluntarily serves on the city council and many community efforts deserves special recognition for their dedication to service. Thank you for honoring Jim and for your continued service. Your work is a demonstration of what can be done by a team of dedicated individuals. So that's well written, and we appreciate that, Mrs. Frost. All right, let's see, down to business. The Planning and Zoning completed their public hearings, I think it went two sessions, and then provided recommendations, had provided recommendations to this council relative to the Sorek Farms application. And consistent with our zoning code, then the next step is a public hearing, which has to be held within 30 days of council having received that recommendation. There's a requirement that the notice on the hearing has to be published for two consecutive weeks. So to meet within that framework, we would suggest publishing on March 8th and on March 15th. And then, along with the agricultural, the public hearing would be at the beginning of the hearing on March 20th. So I would need, I'm giving you those numbers, we need basically, I don't need a motion or anything, but for council to acknowledge that that makes sense and to set that public hearing for March 20th.
Acknowledged and scheduled.
All right, very good. Okay, and I'll make sure that the notices get published. All right, let's see. We, as everyone's aware, there's another one that will be coming down the tracks, and it's actually started, and that's the subdivision development, everybody's calling it the golf course development. So that began with the submission of a conceptual plan. And what we've done is, we put together, I thought it would be helpful if we put together like a little scorecard for how this process works, with an emphasis on making sure the public is aware of how many opportunities they'll have for participation. There are copies of these in the back, and I'll talk about the planning and zoning meeting tomorrow, we'll have them there, there. We're going to post them on our website so that everybody knows what the process is. I had one favor, all right, I should have given them that. And if you permit me, I'll run through it kind of quickly. All right. It all starts with the, and if anybody who's interested in this, and I'm going to give her the courtesy of waiting for someone to get this up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you're good.
I'm dawdling.
I didn't want to start it. And so, really, I want to refresh myself on this, and this is a, this is a procedure that's, I think it's common to most cities, but it's incorporated in our zoning code. It all starts with the developer submitting a conceptual plan. And that has been received, we posted that on our website. It's a design of where streets would go, what kind, where the houses would be, those types of things. What happens next then is the zoning department reviews that for compliance, submittal compliance. And in this case, I can tell you, this is, this is the format for anyone, not just for this one. That's why it's not identified directly at the golf course. In this case, it turns out that there were some items that needed to be submitted that weren't, that weren't included. And so what happens is zoning says, hey, we need this, this, and this. And that's been communicated to the developer. And upon final, upon submittal compliance, they would set the meeting. Now, what happened in this case, the meeting got set out, it only has to, the only part is 14 days' notice, but the meeting got set out for March 27th, I believe. So the meeting got set well, you know, well out, to give them sufficient time to get the rest of their documents in. If they don't have them in in time, then that meeting's, that's on them, and the meeting will have to be continued. The, at that point, the meeting date is posted on the city website, that was done. And then the Planning and Zoning Commission, at that meeting, they review it, this is a discussion process at this meeting. They're not going to come out with any recommendation. It's an informal discussion, and for Planning and Zoning to take a look and to say to the developer, you may want to do this, you might have to do that, what about this? There is, the public, the meeting is open to the public, the discussion is limited to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The public is going to be invited to submit written questions or concerns, and those questions and concerns will be presented to Planning and Zoning, also to the developer. But that's not the point for the public participation, that's to get it going. What happens next then is the developer submits a preliminary plat, and that's number two. Again, there's a review for submittal compliance, and on compliance, the hearing is set at least 30 days thereafter. And then the staff, the zoning staff, will report some recommendations to Planning and Zoning. And then the public hearing is published, and is posted for 14 days prior to the public hearing. And then we get to the hearing itself. At the hearing, they review the plat for, according to the criteria that's in the code, they recruit, for code and subdivision compliance, review preliminary improvement plans, they make recommendations, and with modifications, and they can continue that for a second hearing if they need to. The public is invited, and the public hearing is open to public questions and concerns. So that's step two. What happens next is the submission of the final plat by the developer. Again, there's submittal compliance, again, there's a staff report, there's a public hearing is scheduled, and that public hearing is held, and again, that's open to the public, questions and concerns are invited. So at both of those stages, the public is to be heard. At the conclusion, the Planning and Zoning Committee then would make recommendations, either to recommend the plan as submitted, recommend the plan with some conditions, they could say they don't recommend the plan at all. And with that, then it goes to city council. And then once again, there's a public hearing. It has to be scheduled within 30 days of the recommendation, it's published, it's on the website. There's another opportunity for public input, so there's three separate opportunities for the public to be heard on this. And this will go over a couple months. And at the conclusion of that, or else within 90 days or after, council takes action. Again, either to adopt, either to adopt the plan as submitted, adopt it with modifications, or deny it in its entirety. So that's the protocol for this, and we're going to get this out and help, you know, make sure that people have an understanding of how the process works. There's nothing wicked and split about it, it's a slow process, and there's plenty of opportunities for public input. Okay. Paul Ro, sure, yeah. Can you explain the difference between the conceptual plan and the preliminary plat? What differentiates them? That's an excellent question.
Thanks.
And I would say, let me put my zoning hat on, but I don't have one. Maybe when you have more experience, I'm guessing that there's some tweaking from that conceptual plan, and it may, there may be some revisions made relative to comments that come out of that conceptual plan meeting. I mean, I know, for instance, on this one, there's already been some discussion about, well, you know, on this road, there's probably going to have to be, probably going to have to widen this road or whatever, so, you know, I think that we'll probably see something, probably not something dramatically different than the conceptual plan, but with maybe more detail, and maybe some revisions.
That's what I would say would be more detailed. The mayor and I talked about this also at our meeting last week. I think this was a great, the mayor, Mayor Anderson and Fred, put their heads together, Fred Guerrero, and I think it's a great thing for the public to understand the process. They get a lot of questions, and they're like, well, what's going on with the golf court? Well, all we can say is, well, they're in the process. So now we have a nicely defined, written-out process. I think this is very helpful to the public. And I would say that that preliminary plat is going to have all the measurements. I don't know if the conceptual plan has much for measurements on it, but the exact locations of where the sewer lines, the sewer line's going to be on the east side of the road or the west side of the roads, the gas lines. I think, I would say things like that are going to be in the plat, but not in the conceptual plan. That's my thought.
How conceptual do you think this should look?
Yeah, the conceptual is just kind of like an aerial view of what it's going to look like. I think the plat, yeah, think about a plat. Yeah, a plat, you're always going to have numbers.
All right, and the word everybody always waits for, last name. There is a, there is a hearing here tomorrow, a public hearing on, tomorrow at 6:30 with planning and zoning, and this is the, to begin consideration of, this is a continuation of revisions to the zoning code, and to continue, to address Article 8 supplemental land use regulations. And among the menu items are, they're going to talk about accessory buildings, accessory structures, there is a difference, come tomorrow, and they'll tell you, temporary structures, a big one, outdoor storage and display, and my personal favorite, accessory uses and agricultural uses. So we're going to be doing the birds and the bees. You know, the chickens and the bees. And I, you know, I smile when I say that, but, so this is an important section. It's going to take some time, without a question, but this is a beginning.
Is tomorrow's meeting for public input, or is it just to listen to any board discuss this?
I believe that they'll take questions at the end. I have, I'm not sure of the answer to that. I believe it's a workshop also. Yeah, that's what it's designed as, a workshop on it. It's, we're not at the public hearing stage right. In fact, we're well advanced in the public hearing stage. It'll probably take a couple workshops on this one, at least. But I believe that they've permitted some input from, you know, either at the conclusion with questions at the end, or.
Yeah, at the end if they have time.
Okay.
Sometimes they run long.
All right, yeah. That's all I got.
And to explain that a little bit, when we have meetings like workshops and we don't have public input, a lot of it, I mean, as we're ending a two-hour-long meeting, is that we're not at the point to have that dialogue back and forth with the public. And if anybody's, well, you've all been to public meetings where it just grinds into the detail and detail and detail, and the project isn't that far along. So it's, it's time for us to discuss it, maybe at the end, listen to some public input. Obviously, you guys all have everybody's phone numbers and can give that public input. But it's not because the design is to exclude the public, it's just that we're not at that point, so we want to keep things moving. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and you can absolutely email Barry, the zoning administrator, and with any of your questions or comments that come out of that meeting, if you don't have time to bring them up at the meeting, you can email them, and they would be addressed at the following workshop.
Exactly.
And that would be Barry's.
Barry. Okay, Pani has a report.
Just that we're continuing to work on the gas, and aside from our normal, regular duties, this week we were helping the deputy service director, the mayor, and his administrative assistant for the service department on rewriting the cemetery rules. So we started that and I've been going over that. So we got about three pages in, we're about nine pages in. So there's a lot of, we all wear a lot of hats, but there aren't that many of us, so that's kind of one of our side occupations at the present time. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Good.
Susan, how many pages in all do you think it'll be? You were telling us you're nine in, but from what Brian said, it's going to be a huge thing.
Oh, it's not huge.
What's that?
The cemetery rules?
Oh, no.
Like, do you think it's next?
Yeah.
Do you think they're all done?
I mean, there's some forms, attachments at the back, but actually, the basic rules and all will be.
So then you're all.
Probably, yeah.
We're going to address the rates with this review of the plan?
Yes.
Okay. About my thoughts now. All right.
We didn't hear from me yet.
Old business, anybody?
Yeah, I want to touch on the workshop area conversation at the last meeting, at the two last weekends of March didn't seem to work. I think we left, we were thinking about the one on the 16th, which would be Saturday. Is everybody still good with that? Seven? Yeah.
I'm not sure. I don't know. Sarah, you can like, say.
Barry? Jim?
Go.
So, yeah, we go slightly, we'll do our next workshop on 3/16 at 9:00 a.m. in Council Chambers. And the only other old business thing I had was just a reminder, the Kiwanis will have their Easter egg hunt at the Tudor House on March 30th. Activities begin at 10:30, and the Easter egg hunt actually starts at noon, so.
I do have a question. Do you want me to attend this workshop, or?
I will reach out to you.
Okay. I know you missed it in the last meeting.
Yes, I have two different concepts. I want to bounce off them, see which one they want to try to address first, and I'll get to you before the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Any old business? Any new business?